And we're all finished running. Mr. Kessinger, we're ready to get. I call this meeting to order the, uh, September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four work session. And I will now consider a, uh, motion for the agenda.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, Councilor Wills. And Mr. Kessinger, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Aye.
Air Clapper.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Fine. All right, no giggling allowed. And that brings us to our second item on the meeting, and that is a review and approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget calendar. Ms. Bower.
Here we are talking about FY twenty-six.
Yeah.
Uh, Jesse Moyers, our CFO, is gonna present the calendar to you all tonight.
Welcome.
It feels like we just got done with budget.
Yeah.
We're starting again. So the budget call will go out October eleventh, and budgets are due back from departments December thirteenth. And after that, I start setting up a meetings with departments, with me, city manager, assistant city manager. And we do that December, January, and a little bit into February. We, uh, the outside agency letters will go out December sixteenth, and they're due back in January. Um, let's see, we have a joint meeting scheduled with the city and schools, January twenty-third. This is an assessment year, so we will have a public hearing on the proposed real estate rate in March twenty-seventh. And then it looks like we have another joint work session with schools April tenth. And the budget public hearing is that same night. And we wrap up hopefully April twenty-fourth to pass the budget and the CIP together. Do you have any questions regarding the schedule?
Um, I have just a suggestion or idea for the group. Um, just with all of the needs we discussed recently with the schools' requests, their consider, the consideration of the school request. What about an idea of having a budget lead-in work session or town hall meeting where the public can come out and we can talk about priorities for the upcoming budget cycle and get feedback early in the process? Um, just as a way to as a direction for the budget process.
Do you think that would be for the operating budget and the CIP? Maybe?
Yeah. I'm just curious if Stanton has done that to anyone's knowledge in the past of just kind of kickstarting the budget process of having an open public meeting where the public can engage and provide feedback early on, just to kind of set the stage moving forward.
When you say early on, what timetable do you propose?
Um, I mean, we already have a pretty good idea based on what our upcoming needs are gonna be next year, so I think it could be as early as we want, maybe even like November.
Um, we meet once in November.
Or December.
We meet once in December.
And it probably would not be during the council.
Well, that's the question. Are you suggesting these would be special?
Well, I don't know. So if we, if we have a light work session agenda, maybe fitting it into that, or having a separate special call meeting, either or, whatever could work with the schedule. I just think it would go, and, you know, I don't know how much participation we would have, but I'd like to thank that setting the stage and having an opportunity for citizens to engage with us early on, talking about budget priorities.
I think that's a great, I'm sorry, see, I think that's, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Um, I think that's a great idea, uh, cuz I think it's going to be a very, um, active, engaging budget season after January, when we start getting the assessments and folks are getting those in, we already know they're gonna be a little higher. And so I think getting out in front of that and hearing issues and just getting feedback as early as possible and input is, I, I think that's a great idea. And communicating that, so people aren't supr- as surprised, baby, as they were before.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea. Um, I think that, of course, getting input from the public is, um, uh, you know, that's welcomed, and I think that's a good thing. Uh, I also think that, but I do think that we would need to look at this calendar.
Yeah.
Because you would want to have all your info, I would think you'd want all your information from your other departments
Right.
earlier, you know, to, so that at least then everybody's kind of on the same page, you know, department, department knows, okay, schools are wanting this, and the police department's wanting this, and Public Works is wanting this, and that way
Yes.
everybody is
Yeah.
more informed.
And also the assess, more information on the assessments, too.
And
Another thing, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
The other thing I want to point out is you're gonna have three new members here up here on the dais after January first, so I mean, I think you want, you want them here by January, you know, I would recommend maybe the first or second meeting in January to have this. So you're gonna be talking to a, a, a new council. And the public will be talking to a new
Yeah, that's a good point.
So that's what I was gonna say. Well.
Go ahead.
Adam, let me make sure that I'm, I know you and I talked briefly. And maybe I misunderstood, but did you say that you were thinking about also interjecting maybe during our two-by-twos with the city manager that asked a sitting school board member to? The more I think about that, the more I kind of went, hmm, but I don't know. I mean, did you say?
It's been, it's been discussed, I mean.
Okay, okay, I just wanted, all right, we're not putting it out here right now.
Yeah, just, it's been discussed as an idea, just to keep, to make sure we're all aware of the city's needs before we go into our work sessions.
Mm-hmm. Makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the school board really don't know about the city's budget until it's start coming out. So to have them in the room, one, at least one, they get an idea of what we do have and where the budget is going and what the priorities are. And how the schools fit into that.
Well, and that's, that's, that could very well be, back to the point I was making before, that could be helpful information for all of the different city departments. Because I think, you know, they, they get, everybody, of course, you know, when you're in charge of a department, you, that's your primary concern, and that's what you advocate for, but at the same time, when you see a better, you know, a wider scope of, okay, this is what this is, and this is what this is, then just more knowledge, more information.
So can staff come up with a few ideas and have you all share any ideas you have with us? You know, in an email or something, and then we can kind of put something together to bring back to you in a, in a meeting soon, or? I mean, yeah, I don't think Stan's ever done anything like this before, not in my time here, do you know?
I'm not aware.
Yeah, so this could be something really new and different that would be really interesting to do and to try.
I think
See what kind of participation you would get.
Yeah, um, and of course, I think if we do it in November, obviously, there will be three new people elected, but I also find it helpful for me to have, you all have been on for four years now, and you have a, a greater fund of knowledge of, you know, just the institutional knowledge, just the, you know, procedural knowledge, I think, questions to ask, or, you know, it's, it's nice to have the experience also up here while we're listening to the public also, so I I could see either way, but I see that benefit also.
There's nothing in November, so maybe that's a good month to target, I mean, November and January.
But we won't have anything from the departments until December.
Well, I, I, I think it would be, yeah, it wouldn't be necessary, I, I would see these as more larger than that, not really departmental budgets necessarily. Perhaps, cuz you're right, the department budgets will not be ready, and they're really worked on until the very last minute, I mean, we're working on the department budgets up until the budget is presented to you all, pretty much. Um, so if this is a chance to have people react to what your priorities are, to help frame what those are, that is kind of more the thirty thousand feet than departmental budgets, that's getting into really the weeds a little bit, so. Cuz there really isn't that much in the department's budgets, I mean, they're big, but they're, I mean, unless there's some big new thing, that would be a discussion point, of course. Um, I don't know, we can think about that, but yeah, if you do it, and the department budgets won't be ready until twenty twenty-five, early twenty twenty-five.
And I see, I see this may be more useful on the, the CIP side.
Yeah.
The larger projects.
Well, I know, and I, and I can see, too, letting council, I mean, the school board members sit in when we're talking about what we have. And when they make sometimes some very large requests and said, okay, that's fine, but how much do you wanna cut out over here, you know, do you wanna do away with trash pickup, do you wanna do away with certain, you know, cuz I mean, some of the very large requests, I mean, you basically have to wipe out something to afford that. So maybe that would be good, that they could see that.
That's what I, that's the whole point, is
Yeah.
stop thinking of them as a separate entity and bring them into the full picture, so we can have, we can set that plan for what their needs are with considering everything else.
Yeah, all the other departments' needs as well, yeah. Mm-hmm.
So I know when we do have new, uh, after the election, that we didn't kind of incorporate counselors in, uh, cuz we sat in with, um, with the meetings, right? So that would be an opportunity then to go over this, uh, what the proposal is that we are, you know, wanting to do with, uh, the budget, actually. And then they can, they can still give their feedback because they're still on council until January first. So it's a win, works. Maybe might need a second truck or the Christmas parade. Fight them in, you know, let them get an idea how old it can get.
It'll be a caboose.
Yeah, a little trailer.
Steve, I have to, he might have to
I don't know if that's in the budget.
Two big balls this time.
Two megaphones?
That'd be a good transition.
All right, let me ask you one question about the letters that go out to outside agencies on, I believe you said December sixteenth? Explain that, please, I mean, who would be an example?
Social service.
Um, let's see, CAPSOL, I believe, and the Valley Program for the Aging.
It's that list of agencies that are outside, that's in the budget document, it's like that one pager, that's the human services agencies, plus arts agencies, plus
Valley Community Services Board.
Yeah, we're not talking about the jail or the detention center or those types of agencies, but, um, like, it could be Beverly Street Art Studio, Woodrow Wilson, all the way to the airport, to the Health Department, so
Boys and Girls
Boys and Girls Club, so.
What about, what about like the animal clinics, stuff like that?
Animal, the Shenandoah Valley Animal Shelter?
Yes.
No, that's not part of outside agencies, we are like an owner of that.
And that's driven by a formula.
Yeah.
So now, when will you have an estimate on that?
Um, on the shelter? As far as the new, as far as when we open next spring?
Probably early twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, it'll be early twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Cuz that's gonna be an issue.
It will, it will change, yeah.
Anything else that you're aware of at this point, it's gonna be an issue at that, at that level?
The jail buy-in ending.
Six fifty.
FY twenty-six will be our first year that, um, in the last ten, eleven years without it.
And what's the figure we lose on that?
Six hundred and
Some thousand?
Yeah, six fifty-ish.
Six fifty.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, what's the consensus? You want to have this meeting in December or January, what?
Well, I like the, I like the idea of
Why don't we come back with some thoughts?
Yeah, with some ideas.
Yeah, how about that? I think it's good to include whoever's elected as well. We'll need their input, so we'll coordinate and bring back something back to you all soon.
Sounds good.
Maybe, maybe in November and in January.
Yeah.
I'm just saying. If they wanna.
Now, Mark, November is in two weeks.
No, October.
I hope not.
October.
Is it the weather that, you know, is going, something going around here?
It's a lot of rain out there.
Right, okay. All right, we have our marching orders on that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, then, let's go on to item three, which is the discussion of preliminary fiscal twenty twenty-four financial results, year-end carryover, and American Rescue's Plan Act spending update.
All right, that's me again.
Welcome.
And I have some slides, Kylie, you're bringing those up? Okay. So we're still in the process of closing fiscal year twenty twenty-four, auditors will be on site, I believe it's October seventh, that whole week. Um, so these are preliminary results, they could change, but they should not change very materially at all. These results will not be considered final until after all the audit field work has done, um, and they sign off on the annual comprehensive financial report, which will be at your meeting in December. So I'm gonna review the most significant, um, variances compared to budget tonight, um, starting with revenues and then leading into expenses. So meals tax, meals tax increased by six and a half percent over FY twenty-three. Then, uh, we were better than budget by almost six hundred and seventy-five thousand. The FY twenty-five budget, just as a reminder, was raised to six million, six hundred and sixty thousand. So we will have to achieve the same meals tax just to break even in FY twenty-five. Sales tax only increased one percent, um, from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four. We were better than budget by three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. And I put the budget number down there on the bottom of the slide so that you knew what we budgeted for FY twenty-five, and it was right under six million dollars.
So we're saying twenty-five is lower than twenty-four.
The budget was increased, um, by about, it looks like seven hundred thousand dollars. But yes, the actuals were a little over six million, and the budget for twenty-five is a little under six million, so. There's a little bit of room there, but not much. Lodging tax did not make budget for FY twenty-four. Um, we budgeted one million, three fifty, which is about fifty to sixty thousand higher than FY twenty-three. Um, but there was a one percent decrease in the lodging tax, and so we were about seventy thousand, seven hundred dollars short in meeting that goal. FY twenty-five's budget, we kept lodging tax the same, we did not raise it because the trends were showing that there was not a lot of growth there for us to raise that budget anymore in FY twenty-five. So other major revenue variances, personal property taxes did not decrease as much as we had thought when we met as the revenue team. Um, we were over budget by seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, real estate was seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. We've already reviewed the meals and sales, business license were exceeded budget by five hundred and thirty thousand. Interest, this number here is just for the second half of the year, as you may recall, we appropriated the first half of the year in interest on budget amendment number two. Uh, we use that to pay for three police cars, the entrance corridor overlay work. I believe the true, the wharf tree work, we funded the sheriff's office body worn cameras. Um, we appropriated about three hundred and seventy thousand of that interest, and this is the part that we did not appropriate the second half of the year. There was a tax sale for two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, this is a property that Rick had sold a couple of years ago, uh, maybe it was two years ago, and there were no heirs on, or no other liens, so after two years, those funds come back to the city. And that's what that is. And then real estate on public service increased two hundred thousand dollars when compared to budget. And that is for things like utility companies and reference.
Going up to the five hundred and thirty thousand for the business licenses, can you explain why that, that variance is so big?
Maggie keeps expecting a decrease there, so we don't wanna bump it up too high, but each year it stays pretty strong, we did raise the budget in FY twenty-five, but I think it was only by like a hundred thousand dollars, so there's still gonna be a cushion there if it continues, um.
So what are the actual dollars involved here, what kind of percent are we missing it by? I mean, that seems to be a lot for business licenses.
Number, yeah, the number is high that we get for business licenses.
So our budget for FY twenty-four was two million, five hundred and fifty thousand, and actuals were three million and eighty.
You don't happen to have what the previous year was, me?
No, I do not.
All right, now, the interest, so you got three hundred and fifty-three, and you've already spent three seventy, so, so therefore, you're, you're talking over seven hundred thousand in interest that's that we are achieving that you did not budget.
And my next three slides are gonna be on interest because it was so significant for FY twenty-four.
All right, let's hear that.
So in FY twenty-four, we opened up two new, um, accounts to take advantage of the interest rate market because our checking account with Truist was not earning very much at all. It was next to zero until we met with them, and then they pushed it up to one point seven five. But then we're like, we could still do better than that, so we opened up an account with the Virginia Investment Pool, which has earned about five point four percent, um, we moved forty-five million dollars there. And the interest that's been earning there, we've left there, so it's about up to about forty-seven point six million. And then we didn't wanna put all our eggs in one basket, so we opened up a money market account with Truist, who's our primary banking relationship. And we keep in there anywhere from twenty to twenty-seven million, and that earns about four percent of interest. So in FY twenty-four, we were able to earn over three million dollars in interest by making these moves into these two accounts. And this does not include the interest that's been earned on our US bank investments or the two SNAP accounts that we have for the two, the bond that was issued in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four. Those are separate interest earnings. So I wanted to let you know, like, where did this money go? Um, so the amounts that have been appropriated, the school CIP fund, um, earned almost four hundred thousand. So they were able to take a hundred and eighty thousand and purchase two activity buses, um, for their sports and clubs to use. And then they appropriated a little over two hundred thousand to their school CIP and their undesignated line for future use in their capital plan. The city CIP is the fund that's earning the most interest. Um, on one of the budget amendments, I believe it was number two, we put a hundred thousand dollars to the animal shelter because that project came in over budget, and we needed to come up with more money, and then we took a million dollars of interest and we put it into the Parks and Rec Public Use Facilities Fund. And that is sitting there for, that a fund, I think, is up to about almost one point eight million dollars between that, the FY twenty-four CIP amount, and then we'll have another six hundred thousand going in FY twenty-five.
I'm sorry, into the Parks and Rec Facility Fund?
Yes.
About one point eight, now?
And then the general fund, those are the amounts that I mentioned earlier that we had on budget amendment number two, and we funded, most of those were things that we could not fund in the FY twenty-four budget, but once we saw that we had this interest income, we're like, we can back up and fund some of these now. So the amounts that were not appropriated on a budget amendment, I've listed here. Um, the general fund amount, you just saw a little bit ago. These others, they will fall to the bottom, the fund balance amount that is available for future capital projects for the most part. Um, the debt fund earned a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, that would just help with future debt payments and help build up that fund balance, cuz as you know, with JD, the court, we're gonna reuse that fund balance over the next few years until the crossing debt is paid off. The water fund earned three hundred and twenty-three thousand, the sewer fund earned a hundred and forty-seven thousand, environmental fund was a hundred and thirty-one, stormwater was two hundred and thirty-eight, and health fund was a hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Play in the health fund, please.
Health fund, Stanton is a self-insured health plan, so premiums come in from the city, the schools, and the employees, and they go into the health fund, and then when claims and are played, paid for medical and pharmacy, they go out. And so the last few years, our health fund balance has been decreasing because we've had, I believe, three years of high claims in a row. And so that interest will certainly help with that fund balance, um, but yes, it's just a self-insured fund balance for the health plan.
Yeah, now, just out of curiosity, I mean, that's for the ones that, when you say money goes out, for those that maybe don't have HSAs?
Uh, it's for any claims that they put in through Anthem. Yep.
And even those that have, that we, we would pay a fee, or, you know, we pay the claim.
Yes, anything that Anthem covers under the health plan, whether it's high deductible or the PPO plan, will come out of that, I saw.
Okay.
Yep. So on the expense side, um, salaries and benefits was better than budget by four hundred and four thousand. And this was up and above the three hundred thousand that we had built into the budget for attrition savings. Um, so altogether, it would have been seven oh four, but we budgeted for three hundred, so only the four oh four is above what we had budgeted, and this is from open positions. Um, the biggest departments with the variance was the community development because that new position, we did not hire until later into the fiscal year. Park maintenance, police, and streets, they have trouble keeping fully staffed, and so they always did, at least recently, have had open position savings, recently. Operating expenditures under budget by three point nine. Uh, with the biggest part of that being V dot reimbursable funds and opioid funds, because we have not spent any opioid funds yet. Um, and then the V dot reimbursable, we have a significant carryover there that we've met, um, a staff determine, um, some fall paving that we're gonna do and some sidewalk work that we're gonna do with those carryover funds. And so those last two amounts are restricted and not available in the unassigned fund balance.
But how much is it, the V dot reimbursement?
Oh, it's up here. I believe it was two and a half million, I believe.
Can you? Can you explain that, the V dot reimbursable, that was, we've got a fund sitting there earning interest, and then we use that for?
V dot reimbursable is money that we are given to maintain eligible streets, which ninety-five percent of the streets in Stanton are eligible. And it can be used for things like mowing, paving, snow removal, sidewalk repairs, can't be not used for new sidewalks, but all of those things are used for reimbursable purposes, um, and they've been increasing the amount that we've been getting, and it's been hard to get the paving contractor. Um, they're, they're really busy with a lot of state work, so we did some paving in the spring, we have some more scheduled for the fall, but they don't think they can get to all of it, so we've had this carryover now.
So Jesse, you explained to me when I asked you about it, that, um, V dot gives us the money in one lump sum.
They give it to us upfront, yes, it's not reimbursable.
Right, so then it has to be spent throughout the
Yes. So. And it also covers like some of our streets labor and um, traffic signals, traffic signs, all kinds of things like that.
I see a lot of work going on, but Yeah, I think we're gonna focus more on sidewalks, right, we talked about focusing on sidewalk repair.
Yes, a large portion of this will go to sidewalk repair, um, Public Works has to come up with a plan, um, but yes.
Try to focus on that with some of this money.
They're out there doing a lot of it right now.
That's true.
So, like any opioid funds, how mu- how much is in that account that we haven't spent any of yet?
I think there was a hundred and thirty-some that came in this year, and I believe it's two hundred and some total, I don't know the exact figure.
Department of Social Services?
Um, that is favorable, it's been running pretty favorable, um, kinda ever since the pandemic.
So, I mean, you've got, you're under budget about almost four million. So, I mean, you've got, you're under budget about almost four million. According to this operating expenditures, fiscal twenty four, under budget by three point nine million. Two point five of that's in V dot. Couple hundred thousand in the opioid, opioid fund. All right. How much is in Children's Services Act?
Um, remember. Now, the thing you have to remember about social services is that there are revenue lines that miss their budget too. The revenue, it's a revenue and expense lines and the revenues came in under budget by about almost the same amount as the expenditures missed budget. So you kind of have to look at those two things together.
In conjunction, yes, all right, that makes sense. But I mean, this isn't all, this doesn't mean necessarily we can, that's spendable money, it is not.
No, not, there's not a lot there on the operating side.
Gotcha.
Just because a lot of what's there is either in social services or restricted for a certain purpose.
Gotcha.
So on this slide here, you'll see in column number three, under the restricted designated column, that's, uh, the V dot opioids and other restricted grants or donations appear in that column.
Jesse, can I, can I interrupt one more time? It, is there any, um, penalty, uh, from V dot if Stanton is unable to, um?
I've asked this question and so far, no, there has not been, um.
They're not gonna stop giving us money just because we can't get the contracts done.
No, I think that they realize it's kind of hard, um, to get the paving contractors and stuff now. And even the streets, keeping streets fully staffed to do what they need to do has been difficult.
I told you, I wanted to start a company.
I guess when we look at this page, you look at the top line and the twenty twenty four estimated. You see that the designated is three million this year. And you look down over the last ten years, and there's only one year that it ever exceeded a million.
Yeah, and it's.
So therefore we have a, we have a two million dollar bump up here.
And it is primarily V dot, yes. And the money coming in for the, the amount per lane has increased significantly.
And that's strictly maintenance reimbursement, does not count the, the, uh, primary extension paving program?
No, it's maintenance only. So overall, our fund balance has decreased, um, from FY twenty three to twenty four. Um, the unassigned column is five, almost five point seven million. It is still a little higher than we probably want it to be, but it has, the lowest it's been since twenty nineteen.
What do you think about that? What do you think about that, Steve?
It's still too high for Steve.
It's still too high.
You knew I was, I kept on telling you it was gonna be over five million and nobody believed me.
I kept asking Cindy if, if she was really sure on this number and could we reduce it by like one to two million dollars?
Sure you did.
Just the delete button.
So it will be enough to cover our CIP. Um, the FY twenty five amount was, I believe, almost two point nine million dollars. And so it will leave about a two and a half million dollars that we will discuss probably in January, um, on how to spend those funds. I will tell you lately that I've been told that Fire Station One's roof is leaking, Fire Station Two's roof is leaking. So it's hard to be upset that we have this money to make decisions with for capital purposes, but, yeah, but.
I will give you kudos. It is the lowest you have ever.
Yeah.
Turned in.
You've had some weird circumstances though. Since she's been CFO.
This is the lowest amount ever, and I'm still fired up about it.
Oh, my God, well.
I know when I saw that number, I'm like, no.
Well, I mean, it's a good thing to have, but at the same time, this is a significant portion of the city's budget.
Mm-hmm.
And, and we are, we are tasked with being responsible for this number. And we just can't look at a five point six nine and, and be happy, I mean.
Now, I'll tell you, in FY twenty five, the amounts that we raised meals and sales tax will almost eliminate those amounts that contribute to this number. But we do have an assessment year that was built on old assessments.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, that will help.
That will drive twenty five's carryover, the assessments.
You'd be a lot unhappier if it was negative, so certainly don't want it to be negative, so.
So we're coming down, but.
We are coming down, it's coming down, so. Cause I think our budgeting is getting tighter. We've, we've really tried better to budget not as conservatively, but to stay real about it. Cause we certainly don't want it to be so tight at the end of the year that it's scary. Cause we're still funding our CIP with carryover, remember? If we were budgeting our CIP upfront, this would be a different story. And we would love to do that one day, and that's something we really should try to do. Um, but I think our budgeting has gotten a lot better in terms of, you know, how we're looking at revenues. So it's getting tighter and I think twenty five is gonna be much tighter.
It is getting tighter and you look back at, at the, uh, twenty twenty one, when you had the, the nine million, five hundred thousand. And of course, that was all COVID related. And, and that was an aberration. And twenty twenty three was a lot of carryover from that COVID as well.
Twenty twenty three was largely due to real estate and personal property taxes. Twenty twenty three, we had a large assessment increase that drove, I think, three and a half million dollars of that carryover because, of course, we build budgets based on current assessments, because we don't know what they're gonna be. Um, so in an assessment year, when they come in higher, it goes straight to kind of carryover.
Right, so what will you do next January when you start building the budget? Assuming that you're going to have a significant real estate appraisal.
What I hope to do is try to work CIP back into the operating budget. That's one thing we need to do. Interest will, uh, is another thing that we're having to watch, because we budgeted five hundred thousand dollars of interest. Um, so we've budgeted like, knowing that we would not stay at five point four percent, but allowing, um, a drop there. But if it drops too much, then we may have over budgeted on the interest, so.
At the same time, you have more money bearing, uh, getting interest that's, so therefore you have to remember that.
And our ARPA funds that have not been spent are part of what's earning that interest too. Um, and we ultimately have to report how we spent those funds. There are no restrictions on how we spent them, but we do have to tell them what we did with the, the ARPA interest. And right now, basically, all our ARPA interest is in that Parks and Rec Public Use Facilities Reserve. That's where.
Good, because there's a lot of, a lot of money that could be spent in Parks and Rec.
Oh, Jesse, if you were to put, if you were to put the CIP back into the budget, as you said, is it, making your best guess of what that's gonna be, and then if, if, if it falls short?
And it could be that we don't work, we don't work all of it back in, because like I said, this year's is two point nine million dollars. So I don't know if we can work all that in, but we could start building it back up.
Okay.
So Jesse has a, wants to talk about ARPA for a little bit too?
I do, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine.
Oh, yeah, we have. That kind of leads.
So ARPA, our deadline is quickly approaching to get the, uh, funds obligated, December thirty first. Um, and then we have two more years after that to expend them. But there are a few projects that are worrying me with the obligation. Um, so completed ARPA projects are the West End Small Area Plan, the Union Town Small Area Plan, the Recycling Center Relocation, the Montgomery Hall Park Paving, the Moxie Field Design, uh, Library Roof Replacement. And then these projects are fully encumbered or obligated, but they are not complete or fully expended yet. That is the Regional Radio System. Um, the funds that were set for the Stanton Crossing Marketing Plan, um, those will probably be expended this fall. Two dump trucks that were ordered for, uh, Public Works. Two fire apparatuses, um, which are not expected until May of twenty six. Gypsy Hill Stream Restoration and then the Courthouse Parcel and Design Work. We still have money there for the construction management part of that.
Got a question?
Yes.
Um, cause I heard in one of your reports, how badly damaged? Or was there any damage to the Gypsy Hill Park Stream Restoration Project with the flooding?
From the last one we just had?
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think you're thinking of the one that was before this maybe? Because I know there was some issues with the Coal Avenue Stream Resto Project. Um, I'd have to look at my notes, I know there was some damage over there. I can't, I'd have to look at my notes though and see, I just can't remember off the top of my head. The contractor did have to go in and secure some areas after that storm though.
Money question, does the government, you know, uh, you mentioned, maybe I misunderstood, but you mentioned about some interest that we would have earn off of the money, that the ARPA money sitting there waiting to be spent. Do they have control over every dollar in interest that is earned?
No, there are no restrictions on that interest, they just want to know what you did with it.
Okay.
Um, and so a lo- a good portion of the amount we're earning in the city CIP is from unspent ARPA funds. Um, and so far, what we've kind of had a consensus of doing is putting it aside for the Parks and Rec Facilities. Um, cause we know that the pool house, um, had some structural issues and that we want to address in the future.
Councilmember Robertson, uh, you're thinking, you're thinking about the Gypsy Hill Park and that was the storm back in August, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, so what happened there for that particular storm is, um, when they inspected the site, the site the next day, the stream overflowed at the upstream pipe and caused some minor floodplain erosion on the completed work. So, and the existing pipe tie in, so they had everything held up overall pretty well. And then they dried the site out over the weekend and they corrected the damaged sections after that. So I don't think it got them too far behind, um, when that storm came through in August.
Are we, on another note, are we totally caught up now as far as our water, water level?
That is a great question, I was thinking about that today. And I will talk to Dave Irvin, he's out of town right now, and find out. Um, Josh and I asked him that question maybe last weekend before the last storm. And so I'll, I'll find out from him next week and I'll make sure I have a report sent to you all. I mean, it's looking, it should look pretty good.
It should be looking wonderful, but.
You know, but sometimes when it rains here, it doesn't rain there. So it just really depends on where the rain is falling and how that's, so I'll find out from him. That's, that's a note to myself to do that.
Right.
And have they lowered Lake Tams?
Uh, you mean for the rain?
This week.
I'm not positive, I need to check on that though. Usually they do do that before significant rains, yeah.
So the next list of projects are projects that are not fully encumbered. And these are the ones I am watching very closely and following up with staff to determine if there are going to be any issues making that December thirty first date. The flood shields applications are due, I believe Monday is the deadline. And so far, we've only received one application. So there could be money there that we have to find another purpose for. Tunnel maintenance design, there were six hundred and fifty thousand put aside for this. We've spent some, I think fifteen thousand on the title searches. And then there was a, a purchase order entered, I believe, today for Wiley Wilson for three hundred and ten. So the project now has three hundred and twenty four thousand remaining. When I followed up with the department to see if there were any other expenditures, there'll be some expenditures related to legal work. I don't know how much yet, but there will be money left over in this project that we will have to find a purpose for. Building security, that work is underway and staff are working hard to, um, get that all done. And things are being encumbered, um, often, but we'll have to make sure that we're on track to spend that whole amount. Refuge standardization, um, or modernization, I should say, is, um, should be encumbered in the next month or so. The, a big portion of it will be spent when we order the cans. And then Gypsy Hill Park Pool House, um, I believe there was a PO entered today for the, they're doing a thirty five percent design work because they said they can't, if we were to do a hundred percent design, then it would cost more money, but we kind of needed to do a thirty five percent design to see what exactly is being built and then spec it out. Um, so that was seventy four thousand, so that leaves money left over. And my hope is that we can encumber the rest of that in November, um, for the, the rest of that work. And then Montgomery Hall Park Pool House and Bathroom, we are still waiting on the final report. Um, Lyle said we expect it, I believe, in the first half of October. But then we have to get the bid documents done, get the project bid and then get it under contract, um, in the two and a half months following that. So that's gonna be pretty tight. And that's when I'm keeping an eye, I wanted to see if we have to kind of swap out funds, um, and just move the value of that to the Parks and Rec Public Use Facilities so that we have a little more time. But we will see how that tracks over the next month or so. And so if we have some money that we need to move around, um, I believe there's capacity for maybe a hundred and ninety thousand for the courthouse design work that Mosley is doing, that's being funded locally, that we could fund with ARPA and swap out pretty easily. Um, anything above that, I will need to bring back to you guys, um, for approval to move it. So looking ahead, the auditors are here the week of October seventh. And then they continue their work remotely after they leave. The act for will be presented to council at the December meeting. Um, and then we will have carryover recommendations. Um, we usually have two buys with council and then it will be on a budget amendment in like January or February. So are there any questions?
Thanks.
Yeah.
I think you can fully, count on fully funding your, uh, CIP next year. Based on your two point nine figure, I look back for the previous seven years. And we have always been able to fund a minimum of two point nine million.
We can make it happen.
Good.
Because be brave.
All right.
Well done.
Thank you so much, Jesse.
Very good.
Yep, got everything there. All right, I'll entertain a motion for a closed meeting.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to enter a closed meeting for discussion of the award of a public contract for consulting services involving the expenditure of public funds for discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven eleven A twenty nine.
Thank you, Counselor Arrowood. Here's a motion, is there a second?
Back up.
Second by Counselor Robertson. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all, we will return at seven o'clock. All right, good evening, it is seven o'clock and we need to have a motion to come out of closed session.
Mayor Claffey.
Yes.
I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed or considered in the meeting.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Uh, Mayor Claffey has second.
Counselor Wood. Mr. Kessinger, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you all for coming tonight. Now, that's, we're gonna start the regular meeting. Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And tonight, it is my turn to present the invocation moment of silence. And I brought in a good ringer, Father Mathias Lasumba, is gonna give us our, our invocation tonight. Thank you, Father, for coming.
Let us compose ourselves for prayer to our Creator, who is here among us. If you want, you are free to make a sign of the cross in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. God, our Creator, we are here as your stewards, stewards of your creation. We are gathered to discuss how to carry out the mission you gave us. First of all, we thank you for creating the universe and for sustaining it. In a special way, we thank you for creating the earth on which we live. In a special way, we thank you for creating the earth on which we live and move. We thank you also in other very special way for this beautiful city of Stanton. We pray, Lord, that you send us your Holy Spirit to give us wisdom, understanding, counsel, so that we deliberate and decide according to your will, which is revealed by your commandments, so that we do whatever we do to honor you. And may all that be for the good of your people. For we know that even after here on earth, we are going to give an accountability of what we shall have decided. We ask you, Lord, to guide everyone. We ask you to keep us healthy. Keep also our people in our families healthy physically, economically, spiritually, socially, so that we are not disturbed in doing your work. We ask you, Lord, that by the end of this council, we have decided what you wanted us to decide. We make our prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father. All right, that brings us to the mayor's report. And I am quite pleased to see this wonderful full house we have here tonight. So I don't have anything in particular. I have been tied up of late. And I appreciate y'all filling in for me last month in my hour of need. So I will turn it over to additional members by member of council.
Mayor Claffey, I'd just share that it was great to participate in the Stanton City Employee Appreciation Picnic before last and see all the employees of the quarter honored, but especially one of our very own fire and rescue personnel for employee of the year. That was great to see that.
All right, please stand.
I'll also just add that my family and I went to the Shandau Valley African American Heritage Festival on Saturday, enjoying beautiful weather and lunch, and suddenly heard our very own Councilwoman Edwards' name called for the fashion show. So I was like, whoa, that's like right up there, and took a picture of her as she was going around.
I'm Woods.
Oh, sorry. No, it was a great surprise to see that and be able to see your participation in that.
Well, thank you.
We wanted to see the hat.
Oh, yeah. It's a wrap. It's a wrap. It's the African attire, and it was a head wrap instead of a hat. It's a head wrap.
You were pretty.
So, well, thank you. So in doing so, I would just like to say that it was a great, it was a great day until the rain on Saturday. But I did bring the open welcome on Saturday on behalf of the city and, of course, myself. The Heritage Festival been in the city of Stanton for 35 years. And that is a long time for a festival to go on of that kind. It did start downtown at the Wharf, and then it moved to Gypsy Hill Park, where the parking lot is. And now it's where the gazebo is. And I think it's going to continue to grow for another 35 years. So congratulations for that. Also, there was, I saw Councilmember Edwards, she performed a little bit with the gospel band on Sunday.
I did.
So I wasn't the only one participating. Also, the Stanton Augusta County Research Society also did a ribbon cutting of their marker for the panel end on North Augusta Street, 635 North Augusta Street, which the end was actually in the Green Book. So we did our marker dedication there on the Saturday before last. So that would have been the 14th. Yeah, so participating with Mr. Arrowood and Mr. Campbell and some of the candidates that's running for council and Ms. Al, city manager. And we was able to cut the ribbon on it. So he done a lot of things, but I'll let somebody else go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just add, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay.
Well, yeah.
I'll add, I think it was Councilwoman Campbell, I think you were there as well at the, we were able to celebrate with the Police Foundation at their gala. I put on a nice dress, and my husband even went out with me. And we participated. You were there, Ms. Bogart, with your husband. I said you. Oh, did you? I did. I said, um, yeah, so we had a great time celebrating the Police Foundation. I came home with a bunch of moms and won a course to do firearms protection, so I'm excited about that. And, you know, I just wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't say I was at Library Advisory again this month. And I want to plug the library. Please go to their website. They have so many activities. A little lunch music on the first Thursday of every month, free pizza. They got so many storytimes for children, bless you. Jerry Fit once a week for older population to stay limber and strong. There's even something called the Woolpack Yarn Crafts Group. So if you want to get together with other folks who enjoy crafting, you can do that. And I also wanted to point out that I am going to go to something with the fire department. Can you explain that, someone? I think it's going to be a demonstration of using a fire extinguisher.
He's triad with the seniors.
Is it with the seniors? But I think there's going to be a fire truck there.
Yeah, they're going to demonstrate the use of fire extinguishers.
Yeah.
For the seniors.
So if anybody wants to, great, thank you. That is very, thank you, Ms. Councilwoman Woods. So there is just a lot going on in our city, so please take advantage of these things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Uh, let's see, the, I was able to attend the Daubarn Awards, which were outstanding for outstanding teachers in Saw area. And locally, we had Ms. Brandy Johnson, seventh grade language arts teacher with Shelburne, who was awarded. And also Eddie Santiago, who's the teen program director with YMCA here. So it's a, it's a great award. You not only get a nice little plaque, but you also get a check for $10,000.
That was last night, right?
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, it was a great, great thing. Everyone's always just so excited to be there. And a lot of, a lot of their students there as well cheer them on.
Well, congratulations to the Daubarn Award winners. And I know they, they give out $10,000 apiece, and it was 10 of them last night. And the original Buzz Daubarn Award ceremony started out with him contributing $100,000 to this amount 30 years ago.
Yeah.
And through the wonderful auspices of the community foundation, it has grown over the years. So now they're able to give out 100,000 a year. So the community foundation has really done an outstanding job with this.
I have one thing.
What?
Michelle, I saw you did something else that you forgot to speak about. You were cutting hair. Where were you?
Oh, Jesus.
Cutting hair, what was that? The give back. My God. Yeah, I thought that was so cool. I was like, I didn't know she did that. I don't, I do. I was pretending to cut hair. So there, there was a terrific ministry called Nichols and Dimes organized a Community Give Back Day. And it was a lot of churches and ministries got together the same day it was raining at the African American Heritage Festival. And there were two women. It was for vulnerable people in our community, people who are experiencing homelessness, low-income people. And about 35 people came to get hair, free haircuts. And so one of the, one of the two women did not show up. And I said, hey, I can, you know, cut hair. And so I, I don't even know how many. For three hours, I cut probably 12 to 15 people's hair. But I only did male hair, men's hairs, because they don't seem to notice as much. When you mess up. And so, yeah. So I may have a new, you know, a new vocation. We'll see. We'll see.
Very good.
Thank you for pointing that out.
What a talented bunch we got up here.
So I do want to add one thing. So Liberty Point Behavioral Health had an open house. And they do want to apologize that they sent out an invitation for city council to come, but it went somewhere else, and they didn't send it to who they needed to send it to to, in order to bite the whole council. So I did participate because my husband works there. But I got to have lunch with our firefighter firefighters here that always is a delight to see them out at Liberty Point. Allen Will's Caribbean food was, it's so good. So it was a joy to have the firefighters there for lunch, and I did attend. So next time, they will make sure that they have it going to the right person, which is Kelly. So fill them in.
And that.
Awesome.
Any else?
Nope.
Anybody else? All right, well, thank you, council, for being so active this past couple of weeks. All right, that brings us to the regular meeting and the consent agenda. Per council procedure memorandum number 14 is a policy of city council to have routine, non-controversial items placed on a consent agenda. All items on a consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. If separate discussion of an item is requested by any member of council, that item shall be removed and considered separately at the end of the meeting. Do any council members desire to remove any item from the consent agenda to be placed in the regular meeting agenda?
Mayor Claffey, I'd like to make a motion to remove item 1A from the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda with, agenda with the exception of item 1A, approval of minutes, and that item 1A be moved to the end of the regular agenda for discussion and a separate vote.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Mayor Claffey, I'll second.
Very good. Mr. Kessler, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. So at this point, do we?
I think that motion reproved. I'm sorry.
We'll go to D?
Item D, yes.
D, item D, and that's the minutes. Very good. That brings us to the Ose of Office. At this time, could we please have Fire Chief Jason Ball and Fire Lieutenant Daniel Hinkle come to the front?
Yeah. Oh. That's at the end of D then.
Oh, we're still getting all. Thanks to Jason.
Very cool.
Children have never had the privilege of doing this, and I'm looking forward to this. Going to do this both at the same time. Please raise your right hand. I state my name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Commonwealth and Virginia. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a firefighter for the city of Stanton. All the duties incumbent upon me as a firefighter for the city of Stanton. Fire and Rescue Department, according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, will the families please come forward?
I guess, Josh, you want to set everyone up? So they're going to pin first.
They're going to pin first?
Gee, good to see you. Congratulations. You're more than welcome. Oh, yeah, you need to pin.
All right, and one, two. You're going to get the families in here real quick?
Yeah, let's do so.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. Allison Schell, all right, if we can go, one, two.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Oh, is that right?
Please, a few words from our new fire chief.
Well, thank you, Daniel. Congratulations, first of all. Thank you, guys, for having us tonight. We, we look forward to, to the future. I appreciate the opportunity that you guys have presented me. Leslie, I can't say enough about you, the support I've had from you for the last several months and everyone in the room. Our family, I have a good, and then there were people here, family and friends. And then you see all these folks in the blue suits. That's what it's all about. I have a great staff, including employee of the year, yes.
Yes.
I've had a lot of support from these guys and girls, and I look forward to it. So thank you again.
Thank you, Jay. Daniel?
Thank you, Chief Paul, and congratulations. I've worked hard for this, and I look forward to not letting anybody down and doing the best that I can. Keep mine short and sweet.
We know you will. Thank you all. Thank everybody that came out. We appreciate the fire department.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Very good. Thank you all.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
I'm back anytime.
Social. Yeah, I got it ready.
One little brief housekeeping note. Counsel Robertson, you have a few things.
Y'all get the distinct privilege, and I'm sorry, of looking at this mug today. I'm currently dealing with four failing implants all at the same time, so the uppers are not there right now because they're hurt. I forgot to actually do the nominations committee report and get the people elected on this council or on this, this committee. So the nominations committee met on September the eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and would like to make the following motion. To appoint Cecilia Carpenter, Charles Lawson, Raven Moore, Keisha Nicholson, and Jordan Zipser to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission for a three-year term beginning October the first twenty twenty-four and ending on September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion has been made, but since it's coming out of committee, it does not require a second. Mr. Kessler, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We got that taken care of. And that brings us to a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to increase salaries for the mayor. City council members to twenty-four thousand per year and twenty-two thousand per year to be effective July one, twenty twenty-seven. Mr. Ms. Beauregard, I see Mr. Blair is already standing.
Going to do a very brief summary of this item.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Claffey and council. Welcome. Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening. So what I wanted to do, as the briefing indicates, August eighth, there was a discussion with council about this item. And I polled the council, and there was a majority that asked, that agreed to advertise this for tonight. It's a public hearing. The numbers that appeared in the proposal are the statutory maximum. However, you may, as a council tonight, amend that down, but that gives you the flexibility since it was advertised at the maximum amount if you choose to vote for a salary increase. But what I wanted to do was just briefly give a little history lesson of how this came about, both statewide and locally, so that maybe that can help inform you. In the eighties, the General Assembly enacted salary limits for city councils. For the city of Stanton, cities that size, the mayor was allowed a salary of up to eight thousand dollars. And the council, other council members were allowed a salary of up to seven thousand dollars. In nineteen ninety-five, May eleventh, at its May eleventh meeting in nineteen ninety-five, that was the next to most recent increase, and the council voted a three percent pay increase. The salary went from sixty-five hundred dollars to six hu- six thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars per year for the mayor. And from fifty-five hundred dollars to five thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars for other counselors. And again, that was in May of nineteen ninety-five. Next year, nineteen ninety-six, the Virginia General Assembly increased the maximum salary amounts for councils across the state and for cities the size of Stanton. That number increased to the mayor may earn up to thirteen thousand dollars per year. Other counselors may earn up to twelve thousand dollars per year, and that was in nineteen ninety-six at the state level. In nineteen ninety-eight, October of nineteen ninety-eight, this council voted to, well, the city council of Stanton, voted to increase salaries to eleven thousand dollars for mayor and ten thousand dollars for council members, and that was to go into effect July first, two thousand. So two years from, about two years from the time that vote was taken in nineteen ninety-eight. And both statewide and locally, nothing was really in terms of the amount that was paid to counselors, nothing changed at the statewide or local level. This year, the General Assembly amended the state law, which allows counselors to earn up to twenty-two thousand dollars per year for a city the size of Stanton, and up to twenty-four thousand dollars a year for the mayor. One other aspect about this that is new, and again, this is just more for information and transparency about the state legislation. Councils that go to the maximum salary, there is now a provision that says the maximum salaries may be adjusted in any year or years by ordinance by an inflation factor not to exceed five percent. Counties have had that authority to go above the maximum with an inflation factor. Now cities have that authority after this year. And I bring up the inflation factor because I've had a couple of questions from counselors about inflation. And, you know, the last council increase was, again, voted on in ninety-eight, went into effect in two thousand. And there's not been an increase since. I didn't do the numbers based on CPI, but if this council or subsequent council ever does decide to go to the maximum amount after that, the state does provide, you may increase the salary above the maximum by an inflation factor of not more than five percent per year. So with that, that's sort of a comprehensive city-state history of this. And are there any questions that I can answer for you? All right.
Thank you, John. Mr. Blair.
Counselors, do we have any discussion on this?
Mayor Claffey, I'll just state that as the only member of council currently running an active campaign for a four-year term starting January twenty twenty-five, and if reelected, would be impacted by this decision. I will be abstaining from the vote tonight and just be here more in a listening mode.
All right, I appreciate that.
Mayor Claffey.
Yes.
I, I will just say, I'm, I'm not in favor of this. I understand, you know, why some people may be, but I'm not. I just feel like that a city the size of Stanton, especially with our elderly population and an assessment year coming up and just the current state of the economy, I, I'm, I'm just not in favor of, of moving forward with this, and so I will be voting against this.
So, um, this can come up another time at another council, correct? We don't have.
Yes.
Okay.
You don't have to do it tonight, and even if the council were to do it tonight, as with any principle of Virginia law, one council can't bind another. So let's say tonight, this is purely hypothetical, as you've not taken a vote. Let's say tonight you voted to raise the salaries five thousand dollars for both the mayor and council. Before that takes effect, July first, twenty twenty-seven, if count the members of council change their collective minds by a majority vote, it could be repealed. The salary increase could be repealed. But that's, that's just true, that's true even before this legislation, you know, you can set your salary lower or higher up to the maximum. That's, that's a decision council can make, but again, it has not been touched by council since the year two thousand. So what happened in two thousand, subsequent councils have not felt the need to go higher or lower than that.
But did it, did not the state mandated maximums not change for a number of those years?
Correct. The state changed its maximum in nineteen ninety-six, and it did not change its, the maximum salaries again until this year. So for twenty-eight years, the state did not amend the maximum amount of salary for counselor.
For counselor, but what about for, like Augusta County Board of Supervisors?
They have two different options that they, they can do, and, and I'll just say this, as some of you may or may not know, this has been a point of contention in Virginia for years. Counties have had more authority and greater leeway to set salaries than cities. This year, the, the General Assembly did, and like I said, counties have always, and I've, you know, I was the deputy county attorney in Albemarle for five years. That inflation factor I mentioned, they tended to do that every year for their board of supervisors, above the statutory maximums. They had the inflation factor ability.
Okay. So like if the city employees were to get a three percent salary increase, so would members of council.
That was typically what they did. Yes, sir. And, and cities did not have that authority until this legislation this year.
Well, I just wanted, I'm the one that saw it when it was on the agenda back in the session back in the spring, and, and I realized that I had never seen the, the raise, never seen the rate changed for the city of Stanton for twenty-four years. Which, which struck me as unusual. I mean, I think we went back and revised the rate for our, our water and sewer fee because it had been fourteen years since we had had an adjustment, and, and all of a sudden, the numbers just get out of, out of kilter. They are no longer appropriate.
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years was a similar deal. Understand, everybody that's, that's up here, three, three of us right here will be off council, and it doesn't make any difference to us. We're not trying to raise, raise our own personal salaries.
I would, I would have one thing. I know that Adam and I talked. I had a couple of ideas, and then Adam said, well, I I would make the statement that twenty-four years is somewhat ludicrous to never have do anything. I threw out some numbers, but I think they should be lower. I, my one suggestion, I know Adam and I were talking, said, okay, you do the math. It's ten thousand for each council member, eleven thousand for the mayor, so you take the, what the maximum was, I think it was twenty or whatever. You divide the lower number by the higher number, you come up with point eight-five percent. You apply that to the new number, and you come up, you round it, basically, you come up with a nineteen thousand for a council member, twenty-one for a mayor. But I think that's too high. Especially because we're not, we're not on the upper end of that range as far as amount of people.
You, you mean population range?
Population range. So, you know, one thing that came up was maybe a fourteen and a sixteen. And I could see that, I, I, because I do think that the mayor, whoever that may be, you know, does, does a lot of meetings that we don't attend and don't do, and has to do, sign all the papers and that kind of thing. So a two thousand dollar difference, I, I think is appropriate. But the one thing that I, and I know I mentioned that to Adam, and I don't know how the rest of y'all feel, but I would maybe if, let's say this council made that decision, I would say that that would not take effect until twenty twenty-seven or even further, twenty twenty-nine, so that, that would be, everybody would be on to a new, you know, four-year period. So, because I don't think it's right in a way that a small-town council would basically vote themselves a pay raise on it. So, so I would say there's the possibility, unless y'all want to do two or three four-year terms, that maybe you'd be off by that point, maybe not, but I, that's just, that's just something that I throw out there. I, you know. I can see, and I can see Amy's point, but the only thing I would say is that there's a possibility with a little bit of an increase that we might have maybe to the point where we get a better, or not better, that's the wrong word, get more different ideas, you know, more varied ideas for people to run for this council. If there's a little bit of reimbursement.
May I go, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I, I would like to not look at this so much as a pay raise. I think that is kind of the wrong way of looking at it. So as much as looking at it as an adjustment for inflation. When I did look at an inflation calendar, a calculator, rather, I looked at the purchasing power of ten thousand dollars, and I used nineteen ninety-eight because that's when I thought it was enacted. So the purchasing power of ten thousand dollars in nineteen ninety-eight would now be ninety-two percent more. Nineteen thousand, three hundred and twelve is what I got, which is close to what you had said. And so, but if you looked at it as an average increase, the average annual increase would be two point six percent. And I think that just shows that if you neglect something for that long, then it looks like an insane increase in a salary, whereas if you come to a more reasonable yearly salary, that is more in line with probably the number of hours that people are putting in, and then institute perhaps, you know, a, maybe every other year, cost of living increase, or, you know, look at a different calculation like that. But I, I agree, and I said this before, is, you know, I just really think that increase in a salary right now is important, adjusting for that inflation now is important. I think having a salary that can be looked at as a reasonable part-time income for folks who are, you know, working parents and need to hire babysitter, for folks who, you know, can't buy, don't have a fancy suit like, like these gentlemen, and, you know, need to make those purchases, taking days off, taking nights off from work, folks who are hourly wage earners. You know, that's the kind of salary that might induce people to run for council and serve. And as Mark said, is getting more diverse ideas, having a more diverse council. And I also think that if we do adjust for inflation, everything is adjusted, adjusted for inflation. I would not be a teacher if my salary were not adjusted for inflation. I mean, I just think that that's not realistic to ever raise anyone's salary. And so I, I feel like we also may have a little bit more accountability for folks that are serving on local government. If, I, I mean, it's, it would maybe, I'm, I'm thinking maybe a four or five thousand, a five thousand dollar increase, but it would be enough, I think, maybe the citizens would be more aware and say, hey, we, this, this has been raised, I'm going to pay more attention, and I'm going to look at what folks are doing and hold people more accountable. If it's, if it's really looked at more as as a, as a job that, you know, has, we do, we have things we do, we have hours we put in. We make really difficult decisions. And so, you know, I just asked the question, and I do hope folks will, will, will speak at matters of the public or during the public hearing, because I, I want to hear what people have to say about this. It's a big decision. We make these big decisions all the time. And, and I think salary can reflect that, and, and I, and I, I think I'll cede or let go to Mr. Arrowood. Or whoever else wants to talk.
Counsel Arrowood. I, I think a lot of us did kind of the same exercise that Michelle was talking about, looking at the dollar. looking at the dollars buying power, you know? And, and I also looked at 98 and I wasn't sure if it was 98, 2000, how to look at it. But yeah, you end up in about 19,000 range. But then I, I looked at that and I thought, that's, that's too high in the range, I felt, for, for a, a city of our population. And so I, independently, we didn't talk about this, I, I had thought of like the, the 14, 15, um, range for that. Cause I do feel like, like we were talking about, about the sewer fund there that hadn't been touched forever. If we had kept up with that, if, if this, uh, if Stanton Council or whoever had just done inflation all the time, we would not be behind. You know, all of that, but I, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, uh, to bring, to also talk to the point that Michelle brought up. I mean, it is, uh, I, I'm not going to claim it's a full-time job at all. But certainly if you're doing it right, if you're, if you're responding to emails substantively, if you're stopping and talking to people and letting your ice cream melt in Kroger for an hour and a half about the real estate rates and, and things like that. If you're, if you're actually responding to, to people, it definitely does take time. I, I occasionally have to cover, you know, get babysitters going because my kids can't be left alone as long as our meetings sometimes go and all of that. So there's definitely a cost to it, uh, in time and money. But I, but the straight up inflation one, that, that ends up, just from my personal opinion, landing too high in, in that range. So I would, I would support a 14, 15.
I, yeah.
I just have one of my things to say. You know, for me, and again, and I, I hear what you are saying. And I think, you know, that's fine that you make those points. But I just feel like that, you know, if you want to serve your community, then you, you put yourself in a position to run and serve. And that money, you know, we all, we know, once you're sitting up here, we always know that, you know, we're looking to put every dime we have, regardless of what the carryover might be. You know, we look to put that somewhere to serve the citizens. And for me, that's what it's really all about and not about, you know, putting it in the pocketbooks of the people elected to serve, so.
So, I mean, it's, it's weighing those, those options, you know? You got, uh, on one hand, you have what Amy said. And on the other hand, you have what Michelle says. So it's weighing them options to see what the best is. So as we know, it was in 1995, 96, when they put the, set the limits for the salaries for councillors and mayors, right? So the state didn't change it for all of those years. So what if the state would have changed it, uh, back there and kept moving it up? Would they, would council been able to adjust it every other year? I would say every two years, every two years. And it's because of the state that didn't do it, then nobody had an option to move it in the first place. But now the state has seen that this is maybe something that can be done for the counties, the cities that are, they didn't move it at all. They didn't give a cent of, and I'm looking at it as a cent of for people to maybe run. Okay, no, we didn't run because of the money. We ran, you know, to come on council because we wanted to serve. So it was no way that the money came in effect at all. But still, it's a supplement, right? We are supplementing what we bring to council, right? So with that, a couple of thousand dollars increase over, it'll be 2027. And then, you know, you can move it up as you see the inflation goes up. So it doesn't stay right there where it is. So we always say we are setting the precedence for moving forward for the future, right? So how do we do that if we just let it stay the way it is? That don't means that we are looking for the future because that means that it'll stay there all the time. And do we get people to want to run, to want to serve? It's still a cent of and it's a supplement. So it's just a supplement for a couple of thousand dollars increase. That's all I'm agreeing to is a couple of thousand dollars increments. And even if the other councillors choose not to, that's, that's okay too. You know, they have that choice. But today, if it's a couple of thousand dollars to raise it, because I see that they went from 6,000 all the way up to 10 and 11. Was that correct?
That, that is correct.
Right.
At the last time, the, in 1998, they did move it up significantly. And that went into effect in 2000.
Exactly. So they did move it up, all the way up, 6,000, $4,000, uh, for councillors, $5,000 for mayor. But we're not asking all of that. I'm asking just incrementally to, 2,000 to 3,000. That's still a supplement. And then it can go up as we see the inflation, uh, for us as people. We are also serving the city, we also live in the city. We also going to pay part of that back. We live here. So that's what, so I don't see nothing wrong with it.
I just hate to think, I mean, I, I know for, for myself, it's childcare, it's, it's, um, there are plenty of events where we're covered to go to, to an event and your spouse partner isn't. So you say, well, would I be here if I were not on council? Possibly, um, you know, too. But I, I just don't want someone that has good ideas and, and wants to be on council to say, but I can't afford to.
Yeah.
I've been approached many a time in the grocery store, a football game. Regardless where you go, you're sort of on duty all the time. And, uh, you know, somebody told me that I have a part-time job. Maybe it's a part-time job, but maybe it's an all-time job. Because once you get elected to council, you're on council and everybody knows you're on council. And everybody comes after you with whatever they're thinking about at the time. So it, it is an all-time job. And, and I'm not doing this for myself because I'm not going to be here. I'm not even going to see a penny of it. But I'm, I'm doing it for the city. And I think that, well, we have five candidates for four slots this time. And I get told all the time that I wouldn't do your job, it's not worth it. And I guess maybe we're trying to make it a little more worth it so that maybe we can have somebody that, uh, is marginal, who wants to give back to the city like we do. And who cares about being civically involved and responsible. But, you know, we're tasked with a $150 million budget. And we're not asking for a, a minimum wage, part-time cashier at a, at a grocery store to come up here on this dais. We're, we're asking for people that have some thought processes and can weigh the pros and cons of, of various items and be able to be fiscally responsible and to be able to see the big picture. So this isn't just a casual job. This is something that we need to attract quality candidates to. So I hope by, by bumping it up slightly, something that's been ignored for 24 years, that we can possibly entice some more quality candidates to come forward. And, um, I'm certainly hoping that the, the candidates of the future, uh, meet up to this caliber. So, because, uh, I'm not going to be here. And, uh, but I definitely want to leave my city in good hands. So I, uh, I definitely want to, uh, raise the, raise the rate. And this is the opportunity, it has not been an opportunity. I think we would be remiss not to take advantage of this opportunity. It's not going to break the city. It's, uh, if you want to donate your raises back to the city, I'm sure we can get somebody to take that check from.
That is part of the, that is part of the state code, isn't it? That you can?
Donate it back.
You can, you can donate your salary back. Or to a nonprofit. I know that the governor, the current governor, I think, donates his salary every year to a nonprofit, if I'm not mistaken.
That's, yeah, that's, that's what I did the first, first year, everything went to a nonprofit.
That's nice.
Yeah, you gave, uh, I, I got one of those checks at Habitat.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to say the same about just, you know, the number of people running. It, it's nice to have competition. It's nice to see more people wanting to be involved in the political process and seeing this council as something that they, they could do and want to do. And, you know, maybe if, like you said, adding, adding the extra to it would induce people to do that. I think that it's a good thing. And I don't want city council to be just something that people who can afford it can be on. And, um, I also think in the end, it's never a good time to add money to anything. There's always too many, there are always too many, um, financial needs in the city. But I think if we don't do it now and it ends up happening later, it's going to end up adding even more money to it because the same, it would be the same process, in my opinion. It would be, okay, now we've waited six years since, you know? And so now we, let's raise it to the full 24 or something, so.
Well, establish a reasonable.
I don't know. That's just a, it's a, it's a.
Establish a reasonable base and tie it to employee raises, cola raises.
Let, let's consider, but let me open up this public hearing. And let's see what the, uh, the rest of the city has to say about. All right, folks, I'm now going to open up a public hearing. It is a time the council sets aside to hear from citizens on others about this specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I'll let you know that your time has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak. The public hearing is now open. Welcome.
Constance Birch, 319 Mary Gray Lane, Stanton. When I read about this in the newspaper, several thoughts went through my mind. First of all, Congress, I strongly object to the fact that they're able to set their own salaries and that, uh, many people go into Congress, um, as working class and come out as millionaires. But listening to you each, um, twice a month and all the meetings you attend, and, um, I guess most of you also have a full-time job. There's no question that you deserve a raise of 5,000 or 6,000, whatever it is. I, I forget what you're getting now. And, um, I wondered, and I know you don't answer questions, answer questions. I wondered if you were paid any of your expenses to travel to different meetings or whatever. Childcare, that's a big thing. I was very surprised at our candidate's night to learn that there is childcare. Mr. Ramsey said, provided for some teachers in the schools, which is wonderful. I have young nieces that it, it's a big problem. What do you do even if you have childcare, uh, and the child is sick? You know, the mother has to go to work and the child can't go to talk. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of things. I do think, um, as I said, that you deserve it. But I, I don't like the idea of, um, state officials and, um, and Congress setting their own salaries because they don't feel the pressure that you do. You really seem to feel accountable to us when I've heard you, um, discuss things. And I thank you for all the time that you put into your work.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Joshua North. I live at 16 Woodley Road. And I actually come with two items. Madam Vice Mayor had me, I spoke last week or last meeting. And I want to show my boys here, whenever something is good as done at a city council or anytime that something is good as done for you, you come say thank you. Because last time I brought to the floor a discussion about having the safety crossing guards, about the need for right outside McSwain seeing some issues.
This, this is a public hearing strictly on the, uh,
Oh, my apologies. I will, I can hold my comments then, but I can talk about the salary instead.
Please, that's the only thing we're allowed to talk about.
My apologies. My apologies. I do have thoughts on this also listening to you as well.
Go ahead.
That was my second item.
Go ahead.
Uh, what I was going to say is coming into this, I work as a director of financial aid at a college. So I have to be very fiscally minded. I have to be very, I have to manage a budget as well. And listening to the discussion between Madam Vice Mayor, seeing, uh, Mr. Campbell abstain his vote, I applaud you for the ethical viewpoints that you see with the, with the city's money. You, you said something, Madam Vice Mayor, that really, you said that every time you have a dime in the budget, you want to put it back to the city. I think there is a viewpoint that you are also the city. You are the gears that help keep the city going. And you are, you are what helps keep Stanton great. I am a transplant here. I've only been in the city for about three years. But seeing two, seeing through two meetings, I see how the great work that you all are doing and how ethically minded you are on things. So I would say I support whatever decision you came with. I would like to see it tied to a employee's salary increase. Like if, so for example, my wife is an instructional assistant at McSwain. So if they got a raise, maybe tie it to your raise also. That way, if you're giving back to the city, you can also give it back. It also helps you out as well. It's, it's kind of a, one, it's, it helps everybody all at one time. Cause I do think 24 years is a, is a bit much on that one. So thank you for letting me hit the wrong notes at the right time, but thank you for letting me get my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we will have matters from the public later. Mr. Kessler is anywhere online?
Uh, yes, sir, but we have no one with their hands raised.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on the, on the, uh, council salary issue?
Hello, my name is Karen Russ. I live at 220 Biltmore Street. I just wanted to comment, um, I looked over the stuff in the agenda that you were going to be discussing this and I was not perturbed. It didn't look like a lot of money. And I appreciate what you do. I just thought you might want to have that feedback, um, from the public that I see you going to all these affairs and you take yourself seriously and I appreciate it. I'm left feeling a little bit confused about exactly how much money you are voting yourselves. Maybe I wasn't paying enough attention, but I'm, it's like not precise to me exactly how much money we're talking about here. But on the whole, um, I'm, I'm not outraged at all. Things are going okay. I, I think you might want to look into having a regular system for, um, pay increases. Just so, you know, you don't have to tie yourselves in knots. You know, every two or three years, just give yourself a little raise. That sounds like a good system to me. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's, you just pointed out a very good fact that we have not, we have not set, set a figure yet.
Listen to the public here first.
Yeah.
Mr. Kessler, anyone else?
No, sir, I have no hands raised.
Anyone else in the audience? Public hearing is now ended. All right. I, um, I think, I think I'm going to move that we table this item until we can get a number plugged in here. And I think that's going to require some, uh, proposals from staff as to how to best set a, uh, differential between the mayor and the, and the council. And also how we can implement a second portion of this that would tie it to the new term coming in, where a cost of living increase would be implemented. So I, I think this is way too vague. And I think we can, we need to do something, like was just mentioned in the public hearing, that we, it will be longer termed.
And the state does not give you that authority. So effectively, right? The only way you can do an inflation factor is if you go to the maximum.
Oh. Go to the maximum.
Right. So if you read the, the statute in your packet, it says it's an inflation. So if you read the, the statute in your packet, it says it's an inflation factor above the maximum every year.
Oh.
Up to 5%.
So. But it would be a self-imposed inflation. If we, if a future council wanted to account for that, it would be a new public hearing.
Right, a new public hearing and wait two ye, or wait four months before the next general election.
I can plug some numbers in for you real quick.
Right. So that's, I didn't want you to, I didn't want to give any, any thought, like that is what the statute says. You don't get to put the inflation factor without the interim waiting for another election, unless you're at the maximum already. And that's true of counties as well.
Okay.
I wish, I wish this was a little less complicated and I don't know why the state has chosen to do it that way, but theoretically, if you said, let's do a 5% increase every year, you couldn't do it. You have to wait until an election.
15, 17.
Unless you hit the max.
14, 16.
Sorry.
All right.
We were just throwing some numbers.
We're just throwing some numbers.
Sure, I mean, I mean, that's.
Currently, there's a, currently for, currently it's $10,000 a year for city council, 10,000. And then 11,000 for the mayor. And so we were talking about whether or not there would be, still be a $1,000 discrepancy between the mayor and the city council, 1,000 or 2,000.
I go 15, 17.
Well, I'm going to go 14, 16.
It's always been a $1,000.
Yeah.
There should be.
Difference, not two.
Mr. Mayor, can I make an, can I make?
You know, there should be a difference.
Yeah. Can I make a motion?
Um, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that there be a pay raise for council members of set at 14,000 with a $2,000 differentiation for mayor at 16,000. And that that raise will take effect 20, 27.
July 1, 20.
July 1, 20, 27.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I, we say what?
14 and 16.
14 and 16.
16.
And take effect July 1, 20, 27.
Same as that says here.
We'll get it on the floor.
And what percentage is that?
Well, that's, that is less than what I originally said, but, but, but if you really want to, hold on a second.
Did, does, I, I second, I second, sorry.
Second by Councilor Edwards.
Do you want, anyone want to?
If you just second.
Any further discussion?
Take back my second.
I, I believe we need to, I believe we need to table this and come back.
You want, yeah.
To make a, so I make a motion to table it, uh, and come back once we get some numbers that we all agree on, that we can see.
I don't have a problem with that either.
I don't either. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Do I have to?
Uh, well, there was, there was an emotion already made with a second.
Okay.
And so that has to be voted on first before you can go to tabling.
So you're saying everyone has to vote that down?
Or you can withdraw your motion.
I withdraw my.
Or Mark can withdraw.
I withdraw the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Motion has been made to table the salary discussion at this point.
For a later date.
Is there?
We would, let me just offer this. We would have to have input from council, like you said, on the numbers to put in the new ordinance to advertise, because we would need to advertise.
I think we just need to.
Right, because we put, the only numbers that was in there was the 24 and, uh.
Right.
22.
Well, those are the maximums.
Right.
That gave us something to go on. We could take that, go down, go, can't go up.
But we wasn't going on that. So to advertise a new number, that would be the number that we would.
We were, I.
Was it advertised as those are the maximums?
That, that's the maximum, yes.
That was how it was advertised.
Right, but you can go down from a maximum.
So we didn't, we didn't say it was definitely going to be those numbers. We said it was going to be the maximum. It was advertised as those are the maximums.
Correct.
But that's how you have to advertise.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, that's.
So even tabling it, if you can't, you would advertise.
Readvertise it as a separate, specific thing. If you wanted to advertise it something less, we could.
Then we'd have to have a public hearing.
Do you have to advertise it? If we've advertised it as the maximum to go on and then we go down, can we vote on that?
I think in the interest of, can you vote on that tonight? If you wanted to amend what was advertised lower, yes, you could. But if you don't know that number, again, if you all want to come to a consensus, we can re-advertise, that's, that's up to you all.
I don't know. I don't feel that would be particularly useful in this situation. I mean, we, we, it was advertised, making it look like, I mean, I think it seemed like a lot of people did not read that those were the maximums.
Right.
Right. Right.
And it didn't exactly fill the chamber.
Right.
Um, so you're all very important. But, and, and everyone here spoke in favor of that. I, I.
You have a different number you can vote? No, I mean.
So you don't, you don't like the 14 and 16?
We're all ready to vote and you, you want to go?
I see going down to 12.
I don't see going down.
All you all.
No, but.
I mean, 10,000, when it was put in is 19,000 now. And that seems high for our population. I'm not saying that. I, I'm fine with 14 and 16. I'm fine with 15 and 16. You know, I don't want any way to not run for council because they do the math and they can't cover childcare and the events you feel you have to go to.
Yeah.
It's an argument on that. It shouldn't be run by people who are independently wealthy.
We have four votes at four.
Will you?
Are you good with 14?
Are you good with 14?
Got to table in a second, so you've got to act on that.
Yeah, you have to act on that first.
So we have to act on to table it, right?
To table it first, yes, unless the motion is withdrawn.
So I, I withdraw the motion. Okay? I withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
So then go ahead.
Can I make another motion?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion, I'm reiterating my personal motion, that we set the rate for council members at 14,000, for the mayor 16,000, and for that to take effect July 1, 20, 27.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
I will resecond your motion, Mark.
There's a.
Speaking to the mic.
I will resecond your motion, thank you, Mark.
Mr. Kessler, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
No.
Mr. Campbell.
Staying.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
No.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Could I, now that that's over, could I ask one last question?
Confusing vote we've ever had.
Right. It seemed like there was some desire to be able to adjust for inflation.
Yes.
On a yearly basis.
Or to every term.
Every term.
Or every time.
I, either this, we will be discussing a legislative agenda at the next council work session. Would you like to discuss that? To ask the state for, to allow you to impose an inflation factor without waiting for an election between?
I like that idea because that way it continues to keep things appropriate and, and not go through 24 years without, without a change. You know, if the city gets a 3% raise, put a 3% raise into this, would make total sense.
I'd agree.
I think that'd be an excellent thing. Thank you.
You could do that on a 10th, right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I won't be here.
Right.
All right.
Bye bye.
At this point, we are now pulling the item from the consent agenda for, for item number D, the minutes. That is going to be considered separately. Turn this over to Councilor Camp.
Um, it just, with the recording of the minutes, it just came to the attention of staff, letting council know that there needed to be some clarification on the agenda item from last meeting regarding the, the consideration of the resolution to consider adding the West End revitalization strategy to the comprehensive plan.
Um, I'm going to let Mr. Kessler kind of explain what happened and then he'll have a suggestion on how to reword the item and, Kessler?
Thank you. The, the minutes just need to be corrected on line 219 of the draft in your packet where Mr. Rhodes was answering the question about whether or not there's been any feedback from the public since the West End plan has been posted. And the draft states that they quote, "had received a few minimally specific responses." But this doesn't accurately reflect what Mr. Rhodes said and it needs to be corrected tonight to say instead that staff, quote, "had only received a couple of inquiries and emails," end quote. The revisions intended to clearly indicate that the number of responses received so far is relatively small and not that the responses received so far were minimal in detail or specificity, which is what the minutes suggest as they're currently written. I'd also ask council if we could also consider the minutes reflecting Mr. Rhodes also kind of, in my question to him on this topic, Mr. Rhodes stating at the last meeting that this is really the start of the public input process with our resolution directing planning commission to hold a public hearing in a few weeks for our consideration of approval in December. So I would just ask that the minutes reflect that as well.
Okay, I will accept a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
A move. Second.
A second.
And I will be abstaining from this because I was not present at that meeting. Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Right. Got that taken. Matters from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey. I just have a few items this evening. Queen City Mischief and Magic is this weekend, another rainy weekend. I don't know why this festival draws the rain every year. Many downtown streets will start closing tomorrow at 5:00, so please check social media for maps and other information about the weekend. And speaking of the weather, we are tracking Helene, who is going to be moving inland after it makes landfall in Florida and will start to encroach on our area tomorrow. We don't expect to receive the brunt of the storm, but we will receive rain and some winds tomorrow with gradual clearing over the weekend. And city staff have been preparing as we would with any such storm and will be communicating throughout the event. The governor did declare a state of emergency, so we were on calls earlier today, learning about the resources that will be put in place by the state. So please, again, check social media over the weekend. Of course, the city of Stanton, also Dominion Power, of course, if your power goes out, please call them. And then, of course, the Weather Service and the Department of Emergency Management all have great resources to prepare for these types of events. But again, we don't expect the worst of this, but it will be very rainy tomorrow and hopefully by the weekend, the sun will pop out a little bit, so that'll be good. Uh, finally, voting. Early voting started last Friday. All is going very well. The voting registrar loves their new space. She's told me several times, reminded me how much they love their new space. Voting will continue, early voting will continue through November 2nd. So if you wish to vote early, please come to City Hall between 9:00 and 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and there are two Saturdays you can vote early, October 26th and November 2nd. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, did we ever approve items A2 and A3?
Yes.
Okay, we did. All right. I wanted to be absolutely sure we did that. Okay. That sailed right past me.
All righty. And that brings us to matters from the public. This is a time we set aside to hear from the public on various matters pertaining to the city. At this time, please come to the podium, introduce yourself and your, give your address and restrict your comments to five minutes or less. Welcome.
Good evening. How are y'all?
Wonderful.
Good.
Thank you. My name is Dave Zimmerman. I live at 120 Lee Highway in Verona, not in kind to the Dave Zimmerman that lives in Stanton. However, I did have a sister that lived here about 50 years with her and her husband and their family. So, and I've been around, I grew up in Caff Mountain, so I've been around a long time in Stanton, where I did stuff in Stanton. I'm here tonight to tell you about a program or a mission that we have in Augusta County that was approved on 9/11. And that is the location of a, um, military memorial at the new courthouse, near the new courthouse in, in front of the government center. We're sending around right now an overlay of where it's at. It's going to be called Augusta County Military Memorial, a Garden of Hills. Our military memorial was paved by the way of a lot of airmen, soldiers, and sailors. If you look at the courthouse in Stanton, you'll see about 241 names on that list that they have down there, people who lost their life. As I believe it, the last one is in, from Korea. However, there's a lot more that's gone because of things like Agent Orange and result of injuries that, where they got out of service and didn't have combat no more and they came home and they passed away. I have a brother-in-law who lived in the county and a father-in-law lived in the county and both of them were injured as a result of war. So I know what that is. I am a, from the U.S. Air Force, honor guard in, in Arlington. I was in Bolin Air Force Base for a long time. We have an obligation to our veterans. Our military, both past and present, have paid the price. I carry a coin with me that says the following. A veteran is someone who wrote a blank check made payable to the United States of America for the amount of two and including their life. We all know that. I have personally seen Marxism and communism at work and we don't want that in our country. Our area that we're having the military memorial at will be hallowed ground where vets can come, sit and remember their comrades and their sacrifices they made. Or the families of vets that have lost their life can come and have a picnic or whatever they feel necessary to honor their previous veterans. We will also have an area where they can honor their veterans with pavers with their name on it and their service on it. This is just a small token that we can do to honor them for what they've done for us. We have freedom because of what they do, did and what they continue to do. And they deserve any and all the respect that we can give them. I'm not going to take up much time for y'all tonight and I will go into more detail later, but I just wanted to make you aware of it. So this will include Stanton and Waynesboro as part of Augusta County. So we're all going to be there, uh, included in it. Not asking you for money. Just wanted to tell you about.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your service.
Backing apologies about missing the order.
No problem at all. You go right ahead.
Again, my name is Joshua North at 16 Woodley Road. This is my son, Lucas. Again, once again, thank you for being attentive to the needs of the city. Thank you for Madam Vice Mayor by listening to us. Thank you, city manager, for hearing that feedback from what is needed. And I would like to say thank you for, we have a new street crossing guard. She is super friendly. She's very sociable, very personable, and it's. And it's a great thing to see that this, it's nice for me to see, I, I bring feedback and it gets here, it gets listened to. So it's a thank you to the city. So thank you for that. Do you want to say anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Mr. Kessker, do we have anybody online?
I have no one with their hands raised.
Wow.
Well, at that point, I mean, at 8:25, we stand adjourned.
All right.
Thank you all.